How good is it?
I'm very well.
You busy?
Busy.
Yeah.
But all good.
I haven't seen the article yet, but I saw on Facebook. How wonderful.
How was your first day?
Oh, yeah, I saw too. Last night I like flipped through both.
Ready?
And magazines that I have. And I'm like, there's a photo. It's a nice picture of you two.
Oh, well, thank you.
Okay, I would like to call for order the school committee meeting.
No, it was, um.
For the evening of September 7th.
I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
Do you have before your agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Comments from the public?
Want to come up here, Brian?
Sure. Well, I get the big seat this time. Uh, I just want to say that it was a it was a great, uh, first day. Uh, today was the first day of senior year. Uh, meeting all my teachers where it's pretty cool. Uh, some new ones, some old ones. And, uh, just can't wait to get my diploma at the end of the year. So it was a, it was a great year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Anyone else? Okay. Superintendent's report.
All right. So, um, I will tell you all about our opening week last week and our opening day today. So we had a really wonderful opening week, um, for staff this last week that offered some really rich professional development opportunities around our new vision, mission, and core values. Um, first of all, we welcomed thirty-five new teachers and teaching assistants on August 27th for their neat new educator orientation. Um, no doubt that they felt overwhelmed after the day was over, as it usually happens, but we are really excited to have some bright new faces, um, joining the ranks of, um, this year and, um, bringing some new, uh, energy to our district. So we're very happy to, um, welcome them. Um, on August 30th, we kicked off the week with, um, Dr. Tanji Reed Marshall, who was our keynote speaker, and she was really a, a very dynamic, um, speaker and, and really brought us some wonderful messages. Um, she offered an incredibly, um, meaningful keynote address, um, that focused on making sure that every student that we serve here in the district, um, is seen, heard, respected, and valued. And that was really the theme of her, um, of her discussion, which was really, um, well received by the staff. Um, she uplift, uplifted all of us by sharing some personal stories about her childhood. Um, she showed us that we, um, are really poised to make good on our core values and our, our vision, vision and our mission as well. And then in the afternoon, the entire district worked in, uh, small great breakout groups facilitated by administrators and, um, the diversity, equity, and inclusion ILT members to dig a little bit deeper into our new core values, mission, and vision. And we talked about some of the evidence that we would see, feel, or hear, um, around the district if we were living our core values. So overall, it was a really rewarding first day. Um, the rest of the week was also, uh, very rewarding. There were many, um, professional development offerings for staff and administrators. Um, another phenomenal speaker that we will be working with throughout this year, Marco Chardin, uh, from Novak Consultants, introduced Equity by Design as part of our work for making, um, all students' voices heard and their choices honored, um, through Universal Design. So we're really excited to continue our work with him and his colleagues from Novak Consulting. Um, other valuable PD offerings for staff included a full day of science PD with Mandy Barnsley and, um, the NES and NIS teachers, um, with OpenSciEd. Um, dynamic experiences learning around how to use phenomena as the core to science instruction. Um, specialist groups, grade level, and content area teams also met to begin digging into their goals and expectations for a high-quality instructional practice this year. Of course, we wanted to be sure that there was some fun sprinkled in for staff. So we had a visit from the green, um, food truck for lunch and hang loose. Overall, it was a very successful opening week and a great, uh, we got great feedback from staff, um, around the PD and the activities that were planned. Opening day was today, and it was just wonderful this morning to have our students back in person. It's absolutely the best, um, moment was just to see their smiling faces and seeing them, um, excited to be there, wanting to see their friends, wanting, wanting to meet their teachers. It was so rewarding and just felt right, just really felt right. Um, I spent, uh, this morning, um, early on before our students entered school, visiting and, um, speaking with children, and they were, like I said, quite excited, a few nervous, a few nervous kids. Um, but overall, I'm very, very happy to be back. Tomorrow, I will start my day at CPS and NHS to greet our middle and high schoolers, uh, on their second day. Um, I know that staff at each school have made every effort to welcome students, really help them feel comfortable and, um, be prepared for an exciting school year. Today was also a time to remind our students of the importance of following our health and safety protocols. We still are under COVID, and we still need to make sure that everyone is on track with, um, following those important rules so that we can stay in school. Um, everybody will get the hang of them soon enough. Um, I, I'm sure that, um, you know, they will make an effort to, to keep, keep going with those, um, overall. And I'd say overall, it was a joyous day for everyone. Um, when we were online, I was able to ask principals to chime in, but I'm not going to ask them, they weren't. I didn't tell them ahead of time, but I'm sure that they would have lots to say about the, um, opening day activities in their schools. And I certainly hope that they enjoyed, um, walking the halls, um, as much as I enjoyed my early morning visit. Um, I hope tomorrow I will have more time to be able to spend in schools. Um, ready to start on the budget planning?
Let me see if there's any questions.
Any questions about opening day or opening week?
I, I do have a question.
Sure.
Out of those thirty-five teachers, how many were bilingual?
Bilingual teachers, I believe we have, uh, two new bilingual teachers.
Okay.
Possibly three.
Good to know.
It's hard to.
And they're bilingual, what language?
Spanish. We do have, um, we have a new teacher, um, who is a, um, speech and language pathologist who's Bulgarian.
Great.
So, um, and we have an ESL teacher who is bilingual. We have two, actually, two bilingual, so more than, than two. My, my apologies, I'm just not thinking, you know.
No, that's fine, that's great.
Uh, one Portuguese speaker, um, two Spanish speakers, um, one, one teacher, um, Lilian Sosa in the, at the high school, and another Spanish speaker at the middle school, um, Garland. And I'm, Garland's last name is, is escaping me. Thank you, Maxim. So, um, we are in, in definitely improving our, um, language diversity.
Yes. Good to know.
Thank you.
Rocky, any questions?
Uh, no, sir.
Good.
Um, I just wanted to thank the staff and you and all the janitors that worked very hard to open the school again. Because I remember last year, the first day of school was online. And I was actually an online student for the whole year last year, so being in the building and seeing everyone was really good. And the energy was, like, everyone.
So it was really your first day, wasn't it? How'd you like the cafeteria?
Yeah, good.
Superior lunch.
Yeah, um, I was offline for like, hmm, like a year and a half. So being in the building and learning was really good. So I just wanted to thank everyone.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
So you said a year and a half of your online learning?
Mm-hmm.
Did you feel as though you learned more? It's only one day, obviously, but did you, did it resonate more with you in one day in person? Um, learning from the teacher, face-to-face with your peers, or?
Yeah, because like, most of the teachers actually today were offline, like, they were writing on the whiteboard. You know, they weren't really using technology. So I think it did resonate with me more because being on the screen and just, it just, I don't know. I think I got more out of it, even though it was just the first day.
Cool, awesome, thank you. Catherine?
I just have a question.
Sure.
That's okay. Um, I, I don't know if this is possible, but I know that you did a lot of work with Tanji. And I wonder if, I'm not looking for people to identify, it could all be, um, private, but I would be interested to see or read reflections from the work you all did. Cause I've found with some of the work and, and meetings and conversations I've had with individuals, we're all looking or approach conversations around diversity differently. And so I just think some of the take-home or the aha moments for you all would be helpful for us to know what you went through and, and feel as we've got a predominantly white leadership team. And I think if we're going to do this work and really roll our sleeves up, we can start by learning some of the thoughts or reflections that your team had so that we know how best to prepare and support our students. Would you all be all right with that?
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Um, through the chair, I'd, I'd like to just mention that we collected exit tickets from every, um, educator who worked in the small groups, um, basically all of our teachers across the district. So we have those exit tickets, probably about two hundred and fifty of them. And we're going to be going through them and collecting the information. So we'll be happy to share some of that with you as we compile a report as to what people, how people, um, reacted to, to our small group work, which is really helpful. So yes, we'll be happy to share that with you. And we invite you to come to any of the professional development offerings that we have, um, so that you can actually hear some of the same folks that we're hearing too, because I think they have some valuable messages to share for all of us.
Great. And there's a calendar or something you could share with us, PD? That would be terrific.
Happy to do that.
Okay, the budget planning calendar.
Okay, so I'd like to share the budget directives and the preliminary budget planning calendar. I'm gonna swap them and do the budget directives first. Um, uh, this is for the fiscal year twenty, um, two thousand and twenty, um, three, actually, not two thousand and twenty-two. This is incorrect, but that's okay. So, um, I want to, um, to share that, um, it always feels a little preliminary doing the budget directives in September after our first day of school has just, um, happened. So it always feels quite early. But it's important for us to have plenty of time that we plan, um, and put everything in place so that our budget really reflects the needs of, of each school and each program, um, in the district. So we've started with our budget directives, which really, um, resonate with some of the work we're doing and some of the things that we need to, um, to accomplish over the, um, budget planning. So first, we will recommend the twenty-two, twenty-three budget needs that are, um, linked to the district and school goals. So we are using our district improvement plan and our school improvement plans, which have not yet come out yet, but they will. And our budget is going to tie into, to those. They will, um, align directly with those. We also, um, justify, um, building budgets for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, um, and that, and that those have to be based on projected enrollments and curricular needs and extenuating circumstances due to COVID-19. COVID-19 is still with us, so we are still thinking about what we need in order to support our students, either socially and emotionally, or also with whatever, um, physical needs they may have and what we need, um, to make sure that everyone is safe and, and, uh, and sound as they, um, successfully complete the year and we think about next year as well. Um, for twenty-two, twenty-three, um, all of our projected staff increases and/or our newly recommended programs shall be offset by existing staff and programs unless the anticipated appropriation goes beyond what is needed to fund, um, collective bargaining agreements. So we, we are really paying careful attention to what the expectations are in our, um, in our collective bargaining that will happen next year, um, the next contract that we will be seeing in, in the future year. This year, um, is, uh, for twenty-two, twenty-three is our ESP contract. So, um, we'll definitely be keeping that in mind as we're building our budget. Um, one of the most important things that I feel is a necessity, and that's to ask our building principals and, and our staff to identify essential services for their students. Um, the budget is not created by me or by you alone. We really have to rely on those that, um, are working directly with the students and seeing where the needs fall. So, uh, having their direct input and, um, their, their discussion and the opportunity for them to share where they see the needs, um, coming out, um, is, is essential. It's, it's crucial. We will also continue to support programs that sustain physical, social, and emotional development of our students and our children, um, especially considering the additional challenges that have presented, that have been presented by the current pandemic. We hope that this year will give us a little more, um, normalcy, but we know that we have a lot of work to do with social and emotional, uh, care of our students. So that, we need to continue to envelop that into our budget planning. We will focus on professional development that supports and, and improves equity and access for all students in, in our schools, um, in order to create stronger inclusivity for our diverse student body. Um, we've started this already, but, um, this is not a time to, um, to, to say, well, it's a one, one year and done. We're going to move forward and, um, make this an important part of our plan, um, moving forward for the next five years or so and even continuing. It's never an ending, um, situation, but we know that professional development will be key in teaching us the best ways to do right by our students. Um, provide, um, useful budgetary information from each school and each department, highlighting deletions or enhancements to the operating budget towards the goal of providing all island educational stakeholders with a clear understanding of instructional needs. So we will be making sure to share information through our school committee meetings, through any, um, ad hoc meetings that we may have so that, um, the, the public, the community at large, will have an opportunity to be, be part of the entire process. Um, top revenue streams other than the operating budget, for example, are federal and state grant opportunities. And right now, we are working closely on how we will be spending our ESER, uh, funding, which is our federal funding that was given in relief for, um, COVID-19. And, um, there will be some surveys going out to the general public, to you, to others, to, um, to tell us what, um, people feel is a really important, what are some important priority areas to be able to use some of that funding. Um, we are also looking to develop all bu- budgets to reflect actual expenditures more closely in the last three years, um, to continue to, um, monitor line, line item transfers. We want to make sure that we are, um, not incorrectly building our budget so that we have to transfer things, um, early on. It's important that we, uh, pay attention carefully to what needs to be, um, expended in, in the amount of time, um, over the course of the year. Of course, sometimes things do come up and there are, um, needs to make, um, transfers, but we are hoping to, um, pre- prefer to try and stick with what we had planned and then work on anything that needs to be transferred later on. Um, let's see. Budget utility expenses to reflect actual expenditures more closely, um, in the last, in the last three years. Provide reports on usage, allowing for a better understanding of which users and programs are generating cost increases. We do talk about utility, uh, expenses with, um, our director of facilities at the end of the year. So, um, her reports to us are very important in how we build our budget. We want to make sure that, um, we have accurate data to, to move forward with that. We also want to continue to monitor food service and Nantucket Community School finances to reduce expenditures and raise revenues, uh, to ensure that the programs do not run into a deficit. This is especially important considering, considering the challenges that we've seen, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, we also want to continue budget, budget development discussions with town officials, um, the finance committee, and the select board through the town ad hoc budget work group. So we will continue to, um, make sure we, we are speaking and openly, um, um, having discussions with, with town towards, um, building our budget. And finally, the district will be proactive in promoting, um, support from, for its FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget throughout the media, public forums, and advisory committee meetings. So those are our budget directives. And now I will present the calendar to you, which is, again, a work in progress because we still don't have some dates that are, um, defined yet by town. Some of the Town of Nantucket, um, Finance Department, um, dates have not been solidified. So, but in the meantime, this is a general overview of what our budget season is going to look like. We'll start today with, um, approving the revised budget calendar and adopting the, um, budget directives. Then in, um, the months of October and, um, November, we will be looking at, um, determine, we're going to be determining, um, uh, school councils will be working with, uh, their, um, the administration at each school to have input and dialogue around what the needs may be. So that's an important part. Those two months are very important because that's where we collect information from schools and from the public. Um, November 2nd, we'll have a budget review with the, with the Town of Nantucket. Um, in the month of November, we will have some school committee workshops that will talk about, um, budget development and, um, forecast any budgetary needs based on our current programming and our contractual obligations. The month of December, we will, um, create individual program and building budgets that we will, um, present to you and submit, um, to school committee, um, for, based on our directives. Um, we will communicate with the town manager and the finance director, um, on certain points all around our, um, budget forecast and, um, what this individual school and programs needs are. December 7th, uh, we will be looking at, uh, facilities, technology, and the community school and their budgets. January 4th, we hope to meet with town administration and have them review our general budget, um, find our, our recommendations, and then, um, for our school budget to adopt, um, the proposed budget forecast. So in turning the page, you will see, Ja- the month of January is busy. We, um, will continue any budget development. We'll have a public hearing, um, sometime in, in the later part of, of January, and then, um, the, the school committee will recommend the proposed budget, uh, forecast for the town finance committee, uh, in the advance of the, um, scheduled FinCom presentation. So those are our, that is our calendar. You'll see some meetings of note that are on, um, at the end of the calendar, and you will notice that, um, we have some, um, to-be-determined dates and some general times. Again, we are waiting to hear from, um, town on those specific dates, and we can certainly update this calendar and, and re-present it to you or provide it to you and, and post it publicly. So, so that's what I've got for now.
Uh, do you want an approval of these two?
Uh, you can, um, certainly, uh, vote to approve if you wish, or we can put that on the next meeting to vote. That's up to you. If you'd like to have any discussion first.
Is there any discussion on this?
I have nothing to share. No, sir.
Why don't we simplify things and move approval of the budget calendar and the budget directives? Do I have a motion approved?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Um, and now I'll share the enrollment. So, um, as of today, um, you should have an enrollment, um, document right here, um, that I, that I gave you. This is hot off the presses, um, knowing exactly how many students we have in our buildings. This is really, um, exciting. Um, as of today, our enrollment brings us to one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine students, which is fifteen students above where we ended in June of last year. Some of this may be some of our homeschool students coming. Um, our projected enrollment was a little bit lower, but not by far. Um, and, um, if, if you look, we see our largest classes, um, that are coming up. Kindergarten is one hundred and twenty-six. Seventh, eighth, ninth grade are, um, probably our largest classes, and eleventh grade as well. So we have to keep that in mind as we are planning our budget, as we are thinking a little bit about how this, um, group of students will be kind of moving through like a bubble as we, uh, move them towards, um, their diplomas and graduation. So certainly, it's important to keep that in mind as we are, um, planning, like I said, for, for budget, seeing that this year is all about, I mean, this, that this, uh, meeting is all about budget. Um, that's what, what we are seeing. So, um, we will have more, um, uh, enrollment, um, reports every month, and we'll do some comparisons once we see, month by month, where our students are. So, that's all.
Any questions?
Um, I have a question. Are the students broken down, I see broken up by numbers. Are they broken down into what nationalities they are?
So we haven't done that, we're just looking at numbers in classes. So these go by the classrooms that are in our building. So you'll notice that Pre-K has four different classrooms. Um, we could dig deeper if it was something that people would like to see. Our, our enrollment numbers are just our.
Well, since I'm, you and I are on that diversity committee, I'd like to know what's, what's, what's our diversity?
We can share that information with you, certainly.
Thank you.
I agree.
Great, happy to do so.
Just a, a question, if I may, just around the numbers. Looking, it looks like the high school has got the most significant growth in the, in the, in the classroom size. How are we doing capacity-wise? Do we have enough classrooms for the teachers have enough room? Is that?
We do. Um, it, it's gonna feel like tight sneakers at times, especially when those middle school classes come up and we lose the smaller classes. Um, it, our senior classes is only a hundred and twenty-six, and our sophomore class is currently a hundred and fourteen. Um, but we've got some, some bigger classes coming up, and we have to account for any, um, students who move in after middle school in private schools.
Yeah.
So, um, so we will have to look carefully at where we might need to, um, capture some extra space and how to be creative. There's no question after a year of COVID, that, um, the high school, um, principal and assistant principal are, uh, pros at finding space and, and being able to accommodate students. So at this time, unless either of them have anything that they wanted to add to that, um, question, um, I'd say that we're, we're in good shape for now, but again, um, we will need to plan accordingly as, as we see these classes move forward.
I do have a question. Is every classroom occupied at the moment?
I believe so. I don't think there are any that are.
I do remember back in, when I was in high school, at the far end, there used to be offices. Are those no longer there?
They are classroom spaces.
They're classrooms now, okay. Good to know.
Been very creative in, in finding space for everybody.
We're gonna need a bigger stage for graduation.
That's why we'll plant it outside.
Okay. Presentations and discussions of issues of interest to the committee, fourth quarter budget report.
Good evening. Um, as you will see from the attached, uh, charts, um, this is the end of your presentation, by the way. This is something we do every year. So, um, we summarize how the year went and, uh, where expenses went and how we absorbed the budget. This year, the budget was thirty-one million two ninety-six, six forty-two, which was a million and ninety-five thousand dollars more than the budget in FY twenty. Um, as you will see, we've absorbed a hundred percent of it. There was a little over a hundred and forty thousand dollars left at the end of the year, um, mostly due to unfilled positions and, and vacancies. Uh, payroll came, um, a little under budget as well, pro- close to four hundred thousand dollars. So, um, we, we, we were able to accomplish a lot with the budget this year. As, um, as we usually do, we shared the bigger projects that we, we did. Um, there were, um, SCAS curriculum books ordered over eighty-one thousand dollars for, for, um, grades K to five. There was also a, um, laptop replacement for NIS at fifty-nine thousand dollars. There was, uh, there were iPads that were purchased for NES, um, thirty-six thousand two seventy-five, and there was some flooring replacement at NHS that was close to twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, apart from those, obviously, we had numerous other repair and maintenance, uh, projects, um, um, book purchases and, and, um, HVAC repairs continued this year, as, as we've stated throughout the years. I, I didn't include it this year because it's been an ongoing, um, uh, thing, but this year, we didn't have as much expense as we did in FY nineteen and FY twenty. If you remember, we expanded upwards of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars back then. But, um, it's still, uh, it's, it was still an, an expense that was a major chunk of the facility's budget. Um, apart from that, obviously, we had two big deficits to deal with. Um, the biggest one being the school launch program, which ended close to two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in deficit uh, due to reduction of revenues and lower participation rates. And, um, the community school, um, the general fund covered, uh, two hu- twenty-three thousand two hundred and one dollars, but, um, uh, there were a lot of gift funds that, that helped bridge, bridge, um, the deficit as well there. So, um, as you will see, as I continue on with the community school, um, they show a break-even, uh, at the end of the year. That was after twenty-three thousand dollars, uh, were applied to the general fund budget. And, um, there was a reduction of revenues. Obviously, a lot of, uh, programs were not running, or they started late with reduced numbers due to all the limitations, um, by the pandemic. And, um, so revenues dropped by three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. That though is not program revenues. The program revenues dropped by four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars because of the fifty thousand dollar increase in general fund appropriation. Um, this is the money we get from the general fund as a subsidy to the community school every year. It went from five hundred thousand dollars last year to, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in FY twenty-one. Um, expenses were decreased as well, over three, three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, um, of, of which three sixty-eight were the actual reduction and twenty-three, which were absorbed by the general fund budget. We, we, we worked tirelessly, and Tracy's, he is here, um, all her team did a phenomenal job. I mean, we worked tirelessly throughout the year to look for, for, um, options for, for revenues and reduction of expenses. Not me per se, I, I just report these numbers. Most of the community school staff, uh, was, uh, the one doing the work. And, um, we have to thank all the organizations on the island without which this would have been impossible. The community school, um, which you saw from my, uh, presentation about the gift funds, uh, received close to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. close to $350,000 over the last two fiscal years, which were the years that we have been affected by COVID-19 pandemic. And Nantucket Golf Club Foundation, Remain Nantucket Community Foundation for Nantucket, all these organizations, smaller donors as well, private citizens, private donors have done a great service to the community and to the community school. So it's a huge thank you to them for helping the community school stay afloat. There is Tracy, as Tracy has mentioned in her presentation for the community school, we currently have upwards of $53,000 credits on the books at the community school, which show as revenues. That's on the town side that the Fire Department of the Town wants to record this as a liability of sorts, because these are money that we owe. These are unused, these were payments from people for classes or for programs that were never run, so they see this credits. Tracy probably discussed more in detail at the previous meeting. A lot of the people intend to use them. Some people have said that they might donate these funds to the community school. So this is something to be slightly cautious about going forward. But there is a healthy fund balance in the community school, over $150,000. And we also left, have, from the 350 we received in gifts and donations, we still have over $130,000 available. So again, it continues to be, it was a very challenging year, obviously, for everybody. But we are hopeful going forward that this would be the last of it. And then next year, the community school will go back to the trend it was facing prior to COVID, which was, it was doing great revenue wise and program wise. So that's, I don't know if you have questions or do you want me to go through the whole presentation and then?
I have a question, Martin.
Okay.
If the government is providing the lunches, how does that affect our program?
So we, it's, this year, we're gonna have free lunches for everybody, again, as has been already discussed. The reimbursement rates, though, have been adjusted for this year. So we're getting $4.30 per lunch and we're getting $2.46 per breakfast compared to $184 for breakfast, $189 for breakfast last year and $364 for lunch. That coupled with a participation rate that we expect to increase because we have everybody back in school. Last year, obviously, we had the hybrid model. We had the remote. Island Kitchen food truck was extremely helpful, obviously, in distributing meals, but it's not the same as being in school and actually having lunch in the building. So I don't think we're gonna face $267,000 deficit this year, to your question, Tim. But I also, I think it's probably gonna be anywhere between $70,000 and $90,000. It just depends on how the hiring goes. We've had numerous discussions and it's all secret that it's been challenging on the island to hire and keep workforce. And it's especially challenging for a program like the school lunch, because the starting rates that are offered for something like this and the hours are not enough for most people. So they either have to look for a second job or they choose to go somewhere else. So it continues to be a challenge. We are in constant negotiation with, negotiation, communication with Chartwells and Linda Peterson as the food service director. She does an amazing job. I've run out of compliments for her. She's everywhere. I mean, she's behind the line. She's serving lunches. She's packing. She's everywhere. But there is only so much you can do if you don't have enough people. So it continues to be a challenge. And now we're discussing with Chartwells whether we should increase the per hour pace so we can attract and retain employees and have appropriate staffing levels. So we don't have Linda Peterson literally running on fumes in February. So that's all I can say there. It's not, we've had numerous donations to the adopt a lunch program over, I think it was over $15,000 last fiscal year and some came this year as well. But again, it's, the difficulty is staffing. Same with transportation. We're facing the same issues with those two, two parts of our, our school management of sorts.
Any other questions?
You have a question. So you said it's free lunch for everybody?
Yes.
So Tony Fox can go get free pizza on Friday?
Yes.
Perfect. My question is that, because I don't think that, since he was, he was in this hybrid last year, he was in that, he was in this, and he went full time and went back and forth. And he wasn't even in the lunchroom. I mean, how is it gonna be conveyed to the students that it's free?
There is a public release that we do every year, which goes into Inquirer Mirror and it's translated.
How are the students gonna get it?
I think everybody got it into their student packets. Linda Peterson is very diligent in.
What if the student's not reading that packet? How are you gonna, is it announced at the morning meeting?
They know that throughout the year, it's gonna be free lunch for everybody because they don't get charged. It's not the usual either drawing down.
I'm trying not to make lunches here, Dr.
So it's been communicated throughout. And again, this is a forum that we communicate.
This is the first I heard of it right now. I've never, and I read your stuff like due diligence. And secondly, what is there starting to pay for the cafeteria ladies? And all cafeteria young men or?
Right now, I believe it's $16.
So it's less than stop and shop?
Exactly. So that's why, that's what we're faced.
I have to pay 20 bucks an hour at the box.
It's.
Went up four bucks in a year and a half.
It's, that's what we're discussing right now. I think we'll have to go up definitely. There is also associated benefits with working for the school lunch program. But again, it's a, it's a challenge because it's not a full day.
Those hours, it's half.
Yes. So it has been a challenge in the past. I've spoken about the staffing issues at the school lunch program throughout my tenure with the school, and I've been here since 2015. It's been, it's been, it's been a challenger, okay? The economy goes up, we are faced with so much competition.
I can't even imagine how hard the challenge is now.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I have a question on the UNICEF report. It hasn't quite gotten to you, but I think you've answered some of the questions that I had. I just looked at, you know, the percentages of overspending in some categories and we see that subs is a line item that got overspent last year and some equipment and legal fees. Do you imagine or do you foresee that you've, I know last year was a different year, so I understand that, but I'm just wondering if that will obviously play part of your budget planning for next year.
Yes, absolutely.
And I know we've got the conversation of subs coming up, so, but it just seems extraordinarily high number for subs, but I guess last year was an extraordinary year.
It was. It was an absolutely extraordinary year.
To your question, Pauline, we always, when we start the budget process, which is actually in two weeks, as strange as it looks, I sent the initial budgets. When we start that, we look at the actual expenses and the trends over a five-year period. And every principal or director at the school looks at it and then makes decisions how to move their budgets. So that's, that's, that's gonna be a starting point. And usually, the heavier weight is given to the recent years, obviously. Now, we have to take into consideration the situation in the past two years, but we're not all of it yet. So we have to, we have to tread carefully when we budget.
Okay, thank you.
Some pay analysis, are you on the table?
That's me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So on the discussion of substitute teachers and TAs, I wanted to bring this to the attention of the school committee, an issue that continues to come up with finding an adequate number of substitute teachers and TAs on Nantucket. And propose that we look at making a change to our subpay in order to attract and retain more people who would like to become regular substitutes in the district. Subteachers currently make $125 per DM, whereas substitute TAs, teaching assistants, make $100 per DM. What we're finding is that we are a little on the low side in looking at comparative districts, many of whom are slightly higher than what Nantucket offers. Some are even over $150, including our neighbor across the sound, the other island.
Captain.
Not that one. Martha's been here.
Oh, that one.
So what we're also finding is that some individuals will only take offers for teacher subpositions and not TA subpositions because the daily rate is higher. So we cannot fill important vacancies for TAs who often work closely with our, some of our students who have special needs. And we need to find substitutes who can, who can work with them as well. So what I'd like to propose after, obviously, having consulted with Martin, is to raise the subpay rate to a flat rate for both teachers and TAs to $135 per DM in order to allow for some more interest within the community, for people to become substitutes regardless of their role. And I'm happy to open this proposal up for any discussion.
Well, you know me. I'm a huge proponent of the TA. And that's been, that was on my agenda when I jumped in here. And it really discourages me that we pay less than they're getting hiatus. You know what I mean? And I'm trying to figure out, I can never be a teacher, but I could be a TA all day long. And I never did it for the money, but I know, asked plenty of people, asked me why I went to the school and what did it pay? And when they broke it down after taxes, just like what Martin said, it's hard to get someone to come in and work in the cafeteria. It's hard to get someone to drive a bus. The rate should be at least, if not more, than what they're getting on our sister island, the purple people. You know what I mean? It should be at the very least that. As far as making it the same, I'm not sure that, I would think the teachers should get more than the TAs, to be honest. Thank you.
How much more? We'll put you on.
You know what? I would, I'd like to talk to the principals about that and see what they think. And there's just a principal, see, maybe no better than I or Martin, at least.
Don't.
Okay. You know, at least.
If we give a figure, then we can ask Martin.
Okay, you know, the teacher should get $150 a day.
For teachers or for TAs or both?
No, the teacher should get 150 bucks a day and I think a TA should get the 135, the 135. 150 is gonna give me off my couch. 100 isn't.
Martin, what would the impact be if you sort of project ahead on our subusage, let's say from two years ago?
Prior to the, to these past two years, we've actually underused the lines. If you look, if you look back, 2018, 17, those years, we didn't even go to the limit of the sublines. So the effect in a normal environment, I would think, can be absorbed by the budget and we can budget for it next year. I don't think it's gonna be a drastic increase for sublines, in all honesty, if it goes to 150 or 135. So the school budget can absorb it, in my opinion. And we can budget for it. And now is the time to discuss it. So we can plan for it for the upcoming budget.
Ms. Maura?
I agree with Rocky.
Laura?
I'm not sure I do. I, I hear that, because if you have a need, you have a need. And it, I think that the rate, and we could certainly talk about if it were 150 or 135. I think it should be the same because I have witnessed how much TAs are very involved with students and sometimes more than the sub that's standing in front of the room using the lesson plan that's already.
Well, I've been put into a classroom as a teacher and they, you show up and here's your plan for the day. And then you have someone coming from, a TA coming from another classroom, from kindergarten or preschool, and they go, oh, you're here today? And like, here's your plan. So don't you think that's worth more money? Because the stress is worth a little bit more, tell me right now. I didn't come back the next day.
I don't know.
I'm like, when did you need me? To call up, what class you want me in? Like, I'm not doing it. If they're gonna call me from another classroom? Gym? I'm in. You know, pre-K? In.
Any other?
I just, I don't know. I feel like I would need to consider and have a little more conversation.
I respect that, 100%.
Yes, I would like to have a little bit more conversation and I'd like to hear from the principals about, you know, what they feel and have a general conversation about that. I think it's hard for us to sort of sit here and.
That's why I said, let's ask the principals. But you put them on the spot, Mr. Chair.
Well, I think we need to ruminate on this. Could we put it on for the next?
Yes. Agreed.
Thank you very much.
And in the meantime, I can work with principals to get their input.
Committee discussion and votes to be taken. Vote to authorize student activity accounts. Class of 2025 to Nantucket High School moved from CPS. Class of 2028 Cyrus Pierce Middle School moved to NIS. Nantucket Intermediate School moved from NES. And Nantucket Elementary School, the new pre-K class. Can you explain what this is really about?
So the, the student activity accounts move with, with the new classes that come in. So we have to be able to, to move the, so if they were an eighth grade class last year, they're moving up to a ninth grade class this year. So those activity accounts will follow the class as they move forward. And that's the same at each of the schools. We get every activity account that follows the class, so we have to approve when they move out of the school into the next school. So that is why we see those, those accounts being, being moved.
Okay. Do I have a motion approved?
Were moved.
Second.
Hold on, favor? August 19th, 2021 meeting minutes. Pauline has discovered a dropped A and so.
Dropped M.
M, so that, subject to that change from program X to program X.
Thank you, yes. I'm not motion to accept that.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pauline actually has a life. Transfers and invoices.
Digging deep.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Subcommittee work groups. Is anybody?
Yes, we met.
Okay.
Rocky, do you want to speak for?
No, go ahead.
So.
I've spoken enough.
So we had a policy meeting two, was it, I think it was two weeks ago, and we're going through each policy. So we talked about, help me out here, Rocky. I'm trying to, because we went through three.
We're on the J's.
Right, we're on the J's.
And what we found out is that some of it has been updated in the policy book, which is like this big. But what I found out, and I think that Dr. Lepin, you told me, or Mr. Chair, is that it's very interesting, to be honest with you. I found myself sitting there, have we really been here for an hour? But what, what we found, the three of us, was that a lot of us are gonna bounce back to you guys and a lot of the stuff that's in there, it's just, doesn't really need to be updated. But MASK has changed some of their format, but since our district is our own district, that we're our own little entity. And I really think that, well, some of it has been updated since 2014. Am I correct?
There are some that.
So some of these have been updated since 2014. And I can see why, because it's this big. But I think we're getting through the J's. We're gonna, we're halfway through the J's. Are we halfway through the J's?
Not exactly. We're about a quarter through, but that's okay.
We're halfway through the J's.
It's a large, it's a large section.
Yeah, J's are the largest section, I was told. And I think that the three of us worked really well together and what we'll be able to present to you will be something that we can just make it simple for everybody.
But it focuses very directly on the child. And so the conversation that we had around it was really interesting and focused. So, and it's slow going, but it's really interesting and really good information. And so I'm looking forward to our next meeting, which is the 16th, when we will be continuing our work. So we will have more to say then. But it was, it was the first time we got our feet wet and I think it was, it was great to be able to jump in and have those conversations, so.
Yeah, it was very, it was very interesting. And I thought that the three of us worked well together and that it was free flowing conversation and I look forward to the next meeting on the 16th, right, you said? Okay.
Okay, any other committee reports? Catherine? One day of school, you have great insight?
Yeah, I mostly said everything I wanted to say, like, you know, the energy was very good. And I was glad to, I got to meet all my new teachers. And as Bobby said, like, since we're like both graduating this year, I'm very happy that we're in the building and not online. Because I feel like that'd be a really bad senior year, if we're just online. So, yeah, I'm very happy to be in the building. And it was good seeing everyone, you know? I really got to meet my friends this summer, so.
Okay.
How do you feel about the social distancing in the classroom? Do you feel safe in your, in the room?
I mean, like, some of the, some of my classes are like full, like, all the desks are full. And then there was someone who's moved in my class today, so they're gonna have a.
Desk room?
Yeah, they have a desk right in there. But I think it's, I think like, since like the social distancing, like, requirements are like lessened a little bit, I think it's better because like, it used to be six feet and now it's three, right? So I think it's good with the precautions and like what we're doing and like how well we know this situation.
And everyone wore a mask, there was no issues with that? Keep your mask on and like that?
Some people weren't fully wearing it, but.
Were they doing this?
Yeah. But the teachers tried to.
Do, do you feel like there was enough ventilation in your classroom?
Oh, yeah.
Or was it stuffy?
I don't, I don't know, like, they were just like normal. They didn't really like try to like, keep like, I, like, sorry, it's just that.
You hit a month. I'm back on the twenty-first.
Yeah, it just, they kind of kept it like what it was before COVID happened. I don't know about the ventilation, but it didn't really seem any different, in my opinion.
What do you think, Bobby?
If I may, just to kind of discuss, you know, to bring your point up. Our ventilation systems in all of our schools are absolutely up to code. And they're fine. And every room has a, an air purifier in it, so it may not be seen by students.
That was gonna be my other question. I did receive an email. I'm not sure if, well, I received an email, and I should have printed it out. It was a concerned parent, and they were wondering if air purifiers were gonna be provided or if they were already implemented in the classroom.
So that email did arrive on my desk, and I did respond.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so next meeting, the agenda?
Yes, we may have a little bit of shifting going on. We are likely to, to shift our SOR, SRO presentation to our next meeting and move in the campus-wide master plan updates. We have some updates to share with you that are timely and time-sensitive, so we want to make sure that we get that on there. You can certainly add that. We'll be talking about transportation numbers, which is a bit of a hot topic right now. Summer school programs, our summer school staff will share a little bit about their programs, our AP results, and we will determine a date for our school committee retreat, hopefully in the month of October or November. You can find a date.
Sure.
Couple of just comments on the agenda. I ask this every time, so if you wouldn't mind, through the chair, if Mrs. Vassal could provide the demographics of the students who have taken the AP classes or the AP exams?
Yes.
That's always very helpful. I had emailed Dr. Lepri and Dr. Hallett just asking if we can in future for the agenda have our goals written on the agenda, not where it aligns with our goals, because I think it will help us with discussion as we go through and see the alignment of what our goals are as a school committee. And I would ask, I would ask Dr. Hallett and our, and our leadership team if, as we are presenting this year, no offense to anybody that has presented in the past, but it's really great for us because we're not in the school, if we can hear from students. And I think that, in addition to our leadership, it's always valuable for us to hear straight from students' experiences and then gives us a chance to ask questions and speak with them. And Catherine, I have no doubt already that you're gonna be a great spokesperson for our, for our student body. But I just, looking back and reflecting on some of the presentations where the students have been part have been terrific. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I say one thing. Congratulations on your award today, Dr. Lepri, specifically.
Yes.
Oh, bravo!
Bravo!